Town Bank Mortgage, NMLS number 512138 is an equal housing lender. This podcast is for informational purposes only. And now the man born with a five o'clock shadow and with the NMLS number 2028201. He is a gentleman. He is a scholar. He is.
Tyler Crowley.
All right, welcome everyone to the latest edition of the Cape Fear Report. I know it's been a little while, but I'm glad to be back. And joining us here in studio, oh, and I just want to let everyone know that I will be interviewing some candidates as we get closer to the election. I feel it's sort of my job. We talk a lot about housing here on the podcast to talk to people who are going to have a big impact on that very industry. And so joining us here in studio is Richard Collier, who is running for Wilmington City Council. And Richard, thanks for being here, man. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Tyler. I'm glad to be here. Enjoy it.
So usually we start by asking people how they got started in real estate. But in this case, we're just going to start how you kind of found your way to Wilmington because you're not originally from Wilmington.
No, not from Wilmington. I grew up outside of Fayetteville on a farm. So I went to school at NC State, got a job there and then was transferred to Wilmington with a civil engineering firm in 1997. So we've been here ever since. So I've been with McKim and Creed now in town since 2003.
Oh, nice.
So I've been working for them.
So you've been in Wilmington now the longest of everywhere you've been?
The longest of anywhere I've ever been.
Yeah, that's good. I'm the same now too. I think it was like two years ago. I officially was in Wilmington longer than anywhere else. And so I was like, I'm officially kind of a Wilmingtonan.
That's what I keep saying too. So I'm almost 30 years in it. You know, the longest I'd lived before that was where I grew up, which was 20 years. So yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm here longest.
And so let's talk a little bit about sort of your profession.
Sure.
So you're with McKim and Creed.
Correct.
Who is that based out of Raleigh, correct?
The, the home office is out of Raleigh now, but we were based out of Wilmington. It started here on, in the Murkison building with Mike Creed and Herb McKim. So.
Oh, nice.
The two guys were in one office and it's expanded from there.
And it's pretty big footprint. I was looking online. I mean, there's a bunch of locations.
Yep. We have mainly southeast and now we've got a couple up in towards the northeast. We just got an office in Delaware and we have one in Pittsburgh as well. And then we have it all the way down the coast through Florida and into, over into Texas.
And so you're an engineer, correct?
Correct. Civil engineer.
And so I'll be honest, I mean, a lot of people probably don't exactly know what you do. Cause like you hear engineer a lot.
Yeah.
It's always usually a compliment. Like people are like, what do you think I am an engineer? Like it's like, it's usually a sign of, you know, people are really smart. I know go to NC State and get a degree in engineering, but it kind of explained to people what exactly a civil engineer does.
So a civil engineer works on the infrastructure things. If, if you ask most of them, they're going to say wherever, you know, if you flush your toilet and turn the water on, we, we made sure it goes somewhere and you got the water to you. We also set up where you drive, the roadway system, stormwater and things like that. So it's basically, it is purely infrastructure for, for all types of projects.
So basically it's connecting kind of, kind of private sector and government for the most part, right?
It does.
Cause I mean, every private sector project needs the government infrastructure.
That is correct.
And I guess that's probably a good place to start because that is a big issue that everyone has, right? Because we, we've seen the growth in Wilmington. You definitely have been here since 97, ton of growth. And one of the things that people always bring up is we don't have the infrastructure to support this kind of growth. And so what is kind of your response when you hear that?
So a couple of things. One is our growth in the city is, I wouldn't say minimal because it has been extensive, but it's been about 2% per year. But you know, you look at the big growth that's happening in our region and it's a huge number because Brunswick is, is blowing up in terms of size. And so is New Hanover County and some into Pender. But in terms of the growth itself and, and how do we manage it? It's got to be managed responsibly. I mean, in the end, we know folks are moving to our region, to our city. And for them to be here, we've got to make sure that, that we manage the growth rather than it managing us. And hopefully as an engineer, those are the type of things that I understand and know how to work with. You know, I've worked on the infrastructure projects, bringing roadways before projects were built, working on roadways for the city, for DOT, stormwater projects. The first thing I did in the city of Wilmington was a stormwater upgrade project on Hewlett's Creek from Longleaf Mall under College Road that, that, you know, improved that drainage system for the headwaters of Hewlett's Creek. So it's a, it, there's, there's a lot of things going on in terms of the infrastructure side. And hopefully that's what my background is going to bring to the council.
Well, so how do you, how do you go about doing that? Because you know, the, it does sort of seem like everyone's like, hey, we gotta do, we gotta make sure the infrastructure is there to support the growth. And then all of a sudden we want a bigger maybe development and a piece of land. And so does it really kind of begin with zoning? Cause you're, you're on the planning commission.
Correct.
So obviously things usually go to you guys. You guys say, okay, either you like it or you don't. And then it makes a recommendation to the county commission and to the council. And then, and then, um, so it kind of starts there. And so is that the way that you kind of best can keep things under control, I guess?
Yes. I've worked with the city for really since 97 here, and I've worked with the code, the old code. And then the new code that was enacted in 21, which is the land development code. Everything starts there. Everything in the city in terms of development, growth, infrastructure, all of those are there. So with the improvements we wrote into the 2021 land development code, you know, it increased things on tree canopy. You know, how do you, how do you preserve more of the trees? What are the, what are the pieces of that? More on stormwater. How do we reduce stormwater at the surface area? So the runoff is less. Traffic itself, there's traffic impact studies that are required. So that number was lessened. So that the more traffic impacts would, or traffic impact studies are required. And then the DOT and the MPO work together to, to determine what that offsite infrastructure is. But it all starts with zoning and the land development code. So yes.
And you know, the big debate that we have here is most people support single family. That's, that's one that very few people are against. It's when you start getting into the higher density, whether you're talking duplexes, triplexes, whatever, but probably apartment buildings probably get the most or condo projects. You get into the multifamily and you know, you look at it from both sides and you can see people that say, hey, we need more housing. People are moving here. And so the best way to create more housing with the limited space that we still have left. Cause I mean, I think we're what 90% and we only have like 10 or some percent.
We only have about 10% land. It's, that's vacant.
Yes. And so, you know, so I guess you could outfit maybe what's already existing, but the new stuff, it's like, well, we gotta build multifamily on there. But you see the, the comments from people about the apartment buildings getting built. And so how do you kind of balance that from your perspective?
Well, you know, the, the apartment buildings are getting a lot of talk right now, but apartment buildings right now at this time are folks homes. I mean, we, we can't, you know, the, the, the cost of land is not going to go down. So that's the biggest basis in any project is how much does, does the land cost? So what you've got to look at is how do you get the land smaller? How do you make it smaller? You want, you want less impervious surface so to help stormwater runoff. We want less traffic. We want to have saved tree canopy and those kinds of things. So what that means is the footprint of a development has to be smaller. So that's where I think height's going to be one of the things that we need to look at. Height's not a four letter word if it's put in the right places, you know, it is something that can be used. Now that's, could we get that into a single family options of condominiums rather than apartments? Absolutely. I'm sure that's a, that's a possibility. But adaptive reuse things of taking the, the older buildings or older structures that you mentioned, taking those and rebuilding, reforming them into something else. So you're not increasing anything in terms of impervious surface or losing tree canopies. You know, do, doing things in the, in the zoning code to help, you know, we, we had a, on the planning commission last week, there was an item that came up on adjusting the R3 zoning. So R3 is 33 feet by a hundred foot lots, basically 3300 square feet. So in the zoning code, you could build a single family house and an, and an ADU. So an attached dwelling union or accessory dwelling unit. But if you wanted to build two townhomes side by side or to a duplex, whatever, however you want to phrase the word, you can't do that. Because in the code, it said they need 2,000 square feet each. So your lot would need to be at least 4,000 square feet. So we, the adjustment that we recommended to council now is that we waive the minimum size because having two townhomes are no different than having a house and a, an accessory dwelling unit. They're, they're just, they're together rather than apart. And it also then gives the opportunity to take an existing home or an existing building. And you, that could be converted into a duplex or to two townhomes without it, you know, without it changing anything realistically. And to do that, the prices are a little bit less, you know, you start getting into, you know, instead of someone having to go out and buy a second lot to put two, a duplex on. Now they can do it on one lot. So now you get two homes. So the, the basis is getting smaller in terms of what the land costs.
Well, you know, what's interesting to me, you mentioned the tree canopy. And to me, it feels like a lot of the debate is maybe it, if we were to design these multifamily places, maybe with a little bit kind of more family friendly looking, I guess. I mean, cause you look at places like, I mean, I hate to bring it as an example, but like New York or DC or something where they have these sort of like row homes, which are actually very like family friendly. And there's like parks nearby and they don't look like, like just an apartment building that's kind of just got built and everything's there. And there's nothing that looks kind of nice about hanging out there, having a picnic or hanging out in the park or whatever. And so to me, it almost feels like we're sort of, it's like an aesthetic debate where if we were doing more with these multifamily and creating these sort of, they just look better where you're seeing people outside hanging out and it just looks more almost like single family, even though it's not.
Yeah. We, we've talked about in the planning department and some of the projects that have come before us are having townhomes or duplexes on the street side and pushing apartments farther back into, so that it gives you that street appeal that is the single family or, or a little bit more of that type feel, whether it's multifamily or not, it feels that way. And then having the apartments back behind it. So the, the transitional zoning going from where single family is into a higher density use, you need something separating them, some, a townhome product or, or a duplex product. So yes, that is a very good way to do it because that starts to screen the road from what everybody perceives as the tall apartment building.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's, and I get it. I mean, and there are some really great designs that you're kind of, you're seeing, you're seeing people sort of developers are kind of realizing that they really need to, to maybe do a little bit more, maybe a little less dense, but in sort of leaving more green space for, for the community's benefit. And so, um, you know, we mentioned the growth in New Hanover, but you talked about, I think Brunswick is the fastest growing county. And then Pender is maybe the second fastest growing county in, in the state. And so do you feel like that's going to be a big part of your job as well as working with politicians in, in the other sort of counties as well? And you know, Leland and towns, just because they're going to be seeing growth and they're people who are going to be moving here to be in Wilmington. But maybe they can't afford Wilmington. So they move to Leland or they move, you know, to Castle Hain or something along those lines.
Yeah. I think a big part of our job going forward is going to be that regional type approach, particularly in transportation. That's where the city is a player in it, but we're certainly not the biggest one. I mean, Brunswick's got a bigger, a bigger stake in some of the transportation improvements as New Hanover County does and Pender will. But I think that regional approach is what it's going to take for everyone to come to the table. I mean, we're not going to be able to replace a bridge or add new roadways or improve new roadways. At this point, the state, we know the department's not going to fund any and everything that we want. So we've got to look at what are these other alternative funding sources? And that takes all of us, that region, not just the city of Wilmington. We are the recipient of, you know, whether the number is 50,000 or 70,000 folks that come in. I-40, 421, or from Brunswick County coming in over the Memorial Bridge every day. They come in to work. As you said, maybe they don't, they can't afford the city limits themselves, but they're coming in. They, they ride the roads. They are not paying the taxes to improve those streets. Quite honestly, the, a lot of the, the New Hanover County residents are not paying in to, to work on the city streets. So we need that regional type approach to make sure that it is fair for everyone. So that the city is not left holding the bag to cover all roadway improvements or to fight with DOT alone.
Now, growth has slowed. There's no doubt about that from the pandemic. And you know, there's this big debate on sort of the chicken or the egg approach where people think that the development is what's bringing people here. And then the other argument is, well, no, it's the people are coming here and then the development is coming after that. And there's this, there's this real argument that we have to slow down on growth. But is there really anything that, you know, if you get on the city councils, anything the city council can do or county commissioner, anything to really slow growth? Because it just seems like, I mean, if people want to come here, they're, they're going to come here. Just putting a wall up.
I mean, you know, you look at the, the, the old adage in the city is, you know, well, I moved here. So let's raise, raise the bridge and no one else can get in. But that's not, that's not prosperous in the end, you know, we want to be in a city that is growing. We want, we, if without growth, we're stagnant with, if we're stagnant, then the city is going to start failing. We want our downtown to stay vibrant. To have that, you've got to have growth and prosperity to do it. But that growth's got to be managed in the end. We can't just react to it all the time. We have to plan for it. We've got to know when it's coming. So what can the council do or the commission? And then in the other case, you know, we have to know what our strategic plans are. What is our comprehensive plan from the city of Wilmington? Where do we want the growth that are, that could be a little bit more dense? Or maybe there's some open land or some adaptive reuse or infill projects. But that comprehensive plan is already laid out from large input from the community, where those areas are, they call them nodes. But you know, that you want to make sure that you, we are putting new development where there are services already located. And services mean water and sewer, roadways, but they also mean grocery stores, drugstores, the personal service things. So that you can start to minimize hopefully the trips, the traffic trips that can start helping with congestion. You know, that, we've got to manage it. We've just got, we have to be able to plan for it and not just react because someone came in. Initially, when the, when the onslaught of people started coming, whether it's Brunswick or here, there is some reaction area. But now we know, we know what and what, what is happening, how it's happening. So we've got to make sure we stay in front of it and plan for it.
Now I had Commissioner Dan Scalise on probably two months ago and one of the areas that he was talking about where he thinks that there's room for sort of, these are more kind of dense developments was downtown. Because it's sort of, kind of, I mean, we've seen just an absolute explosion in downtown over the last 15 years. And I mean, it's been great. I mean, I, they had the reopening of the Project Grace, the library yesterday. I mean, that building just looks phenomenal. I can't wait to see when it's completely done. But you mentioned, you know, hopefully we're going to get in a grocery store down there and just, but just the growth in general. But it does seem like we could see more multifamily because it does, you know, downtown, you do think about walking around.
Correct.
You don't think about that everywhere else in Wilmington, unfortunately.
That's right.
And I know people, um, you know, I was on the citizens advisory council with the WMPO. And we know we were, we were, our job was to push the, um, the survey and see what people really wanted. And I know that people always talk about walkability and everyone's talking about, it wouldn't be great if I had to get into a car and go somewhere. That would be great, but the one place where you really don't have to do that is downtown. So it seems like that's a place where we can really take advantage of those maybe more kind of dense projects.
Yeah. And, and I think the more dense projects, yes, it also has allowances for height.
Yes.
Be able to get the density in. The city owns surplus property. It's not necessarily surplus, but they own property downtown. That part of what they can do, if it's a private public type partnership is if, if the land basis is less than the, you know, folks coming in, they can buy the land from the city and develop it. And then they have more incentive to do workforce housing or affordable type housing units within. Today, you know, if you settle at purely market rate, that may not happen. So to get to the affordable side of things, we have to, again, that land basis is where it's at. The apartments are going to be built the same way. They, they're not going to build substandard apartments and in the area now. They, they just know they're not going to be rentable. So to get to affordability, number one, supply has to go up. We're not, we've not met the supply yet. We're still behind. We're behind on, on houses for, for the, for the top end. We're behind in houses for first time home builders. We're behind by the middle, you know, what's right in the middle of that. You know, when, when you talk about a first time home buyer and a home in town, and you know this better than I, but if they're, if an entry level house is a 250 to 350, that's a big, that's a big mortgage. I mean, when I came, when I came out, I would have never been able to afford that, that type of, that type of home.
Well, if you could find one at that price.
If you could find one at that price. Correct.
It's your, you know, that's getting far and few between where it seemed like, you know, 10 years ago, you could easily find a homeowner to 200,000. And I don't think a homeowner to 200,000 in Wilmington exists in all honesty.
I don't think so either.
Not one that wouldn't require a lot of work.
Right, right, right.
And, and so I think that that, that has changed things.
Correct.
But the thing is, is you need those, maybe not necessarily a house, but like I said, maybe a condo or maybe an apartment. Because those are your entry level people who are working a lot of these jobs that we need people to be working in Wilmington.
That's right. And you know, we want to make sure that the folks that are graduating from UNCW and Cape Fear Community College, I want them to have places to live. I would rather them stay here and work and take the education that they've learned and keep it into the, into the city of Wilmington and keep it in Wilmington and New Hanover County so that we continue to grow our, our population organically, rather than it just being growth on people coming in. You know, our, our birth rates are not nearly where they were some time ago too. So we've got, we want to be able to keep the folks that are there or in the school system now. We want them to be here and we need the jobs for them. So the employers also have to be ready to give them, give them jobs and give them a chance.
I mean, one of the things that worries me is if we aren't building enough housing for people is that a lot of people see it as, oh, well, that's just going to hurt the people that are moving here. And it's like true, the, the short run, yes, because home prices will rise. But then you have the people who may have lived here their whole lives. And if you're not building adequate housing and you have people who are moving here elsewhere and they're either retiring or they just, they have an income that's not based on the Wilmington economy, they don't really have an upper limit on what they can afford. But someone who is working in this economy does to some extent have a limit just because we are a smaller place than someone moving from New York or DC or somewhere else. And so to me, it feels like that this is going to be an issue if we don't take care of it now, 20 years from now. The children of residents who have been here maybe their whole lives are not going to be able to afford a house.
That's exactly right.
Unless they inherit their parents.
That's right. And then if they inherit their parents, if they're, if, if the job situation is not in, in such a place that they, they have, you know, make a good wage, then, then if they inherit it, you still have to pay the tax on it. So I mean, that, that is also the bigger burden that's going on right now too, is what, what is the tax burden? The city has kept our taxes down and it's basically neutral for the last four years. And we want to continue to do that as much as you can. However, you know, you look at, if you want all the services and you want roads improved and you want all the, the pieces and parts done, it does cost money. So that again, we've got to start looking at ways to be able to provide the services and balance the taxes as well.
And so do you think there's a balance with regards, you talked about sort of luxury, you know, sort of apartments or condos? And then you have sort of the workforce kind of housing and obviously, you know, there's many ways to go about that. Where you could say every development has to have X amount of workforce housing. Or you can, you know, provide benefit just for workforce, workforce housing. Or you can just say, hey, we just need, we just need more places. So we don't really care what you're building. So how do you, how would you approach that on the council?
I, I would, I would work with the city on where they own property and where it could be used for that, for that purpose. I mean, the Starway Apartments that are going up now on Carolina Beach Road, those had some, the city had involvement in that as well. And now they're handling, so the, what is it? Average mean income? So they have 30%, 60% and 80% folks. So it's an entire affordable development. But again, land is what's keeping it down so that they can build it and rent it at those, at, at the rates. You know, I, I think it's, we got to look at what's out there that the city owns. Where are there places in town that may be beneficial for, for the reuse of things or infill type projects to bring, to put in a set of duplexes or triplexes, things like that. I think that's where we're going to start is, is continue, we've got to continue to look for the opportunities where, where are the right places for it? So.
Well, I mean, so you mentioned the infield because I, I had Travis Beatty on the show and he was sort of singing the praises of sort of infield development is something that, that he does as well. And you know, when it comes to stormwater, you know, runoff, that's a big issue, especially for new development.
Correct.
I do think it's a little bigger issue in probably places like Brunswick and, and Pender more so than here, but it is an issue here. And do you feel like because sort of the infield development, because you are sort of building on a place that was already kind of built, there's already something there that when you do maybe sort of outfit it, that you're not going to have those possible same problems with the storm runoff than you would with completely new development in a new area where there was water now and has, has to find somewhere to go?
If you do the infill correct, if it was already impervious and you're not increasing it, then no, you're not increasing the runoff from, from the development, from the old development to the new development. I still would like to see that even in the ones that are, that are redeveloped, that we are providing as much stormwater management as we can. Because the more treatment options we can put in and slow the runoff down so that, you know, it doesn't get downstream any faster. It's always good. So I would, I'm always a proponent of even infill. I think they still need to provide a level of stormwater treatment. It may not be 100% of all the codes because quite honestly, if you're not changing the impervious, the theory is you shouldn't do anything. But I still think you need to do a little bit. We all know that, you know, when things were built in the 1970s and the eighties, there was no stormwater management. It just, it went where it went and, and that was that. But today we know that, we know it's different. So if you're going to build infill and, and we're going to rework anything on the site, I think we should also look at the stormwater side of it.
And what do you think just in general is sort of the best way going forward to deal with? I mean, cause you, you can talk about places like Racine, for example, where anytime we get sort of a, a, a summer rainstorm, it seems to flood over there. I mean, almost every time it feels like. And so there's clearly areas in town where they, as you mentioned, no one really kind of cared about it back in the day when they built the things. But now we're dealing with those consequences and we do want to move forward with new projects. But you kind of can't, you know, you don't want to just be like, okay, well, that doesn't matter because that's, that was, that's what they did back then. We want to kind of fix that. And so is there a way to kind of do that going forward?
You know, I think the stormwater department is looking at those things now of where are there opportunities that they can put into a capital improvement plan of, of modifying some of those things? The headwater to Bradley Creek is where you're mentioning it, Racine and New Center and all that area that floods just about every time it rains. When it was developed in 89, I guess, 88, 89, somewhere in the Walmart, that, that big, there's no stormwater treatment whatsoever in any of those developments. And that's where we see today, the biggest problems is that it is just straight runoff. New develop, new projects that are coming out today are not the same. And that's the hardest for local citizens to understand when there's something being built next door to them is, you know, we have to treat the stormwater on the property. You have, you need to make sure that you are doing everything you can do to limit runoff from your property. The day before we develop or it is developed, there is still surface runoff going wherever it goes. But we have to stop that. That has to be stopped by any, whether it's roadway, whether it's a parking lot, it doesn't matter what it is. But pre 1988.
Yeah, I know. It's just that there are just some areas where like, it was raining, you don't go that way.
And it's, and that is unfortunate. I do, I know it's unfortunate and that area, that one particular area is really paying a price for that now. So if any one of those buildings were, you know, to be in a redevelopment, if they modify any of the structures by 50%, then they have to bring their entire property up to code.
Yeah.
Well, nobody's brought, changed those buildings in that manner. So it's a.
Well, yeah, and it impacts any possible new developments because even though it's not your fault, you now, you have less room for error.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
You know, it kind of catches up with us. You, you do talk about the environment as well on your website. Now a lot of times you think about environment, you think, you know, EPA, you think sort of big.
Big picture stuff.
You know, national government, the federal government. What do you think that we can do locally? I mean, people are going to talk about comores, like I talk about Gen X. But like I said, you know, a lot of times people think, well, that's just, those are regulations the EPA passes. And so what, what can you do on the council to ensure that we kind of maintain this sort of environment that everyone loves?
So from the, from the environmental side of the water side, we need to keep the Cape Fear River clean. We need to make sure that we're focused on removing any of the chemicals and making sure anybody that's out there that are, are dumping chemicals into there are being, being dealt with in the proper manner. Because we all want clean water. Everyone wants clean water, whether it's groundwater or coming from the city's water treatment plants or CFPUA's water treatment plants. From the remaining environment, you know, all of the wetlands, all of the, all of the Kama areas along the shorelines. I mean, those things we have to protect. We have to protect things so we can keep a Bradley Creek, get it reopened to shellfish. I mean, it's now starting to grow oysters again. So we want to make sure that that can be maintained. And to do that, we've got to protect it upstream. So we've got to be able to handle the stormwater side of it. I think stormwater treatment and stormwater management is probably one of the biggest things that I will work on or try working on, on the council. But also the tree canopy things too. Trees, they take the water, they take the water up. So if we are, if, if folks are removing trees, then we need to make sure our ordinance has teeth enough that they have to re, replant. They have to, and, and not just replant. If you take down a 15 inch tree, replant it with a one inch tree. I mean, I think there should be a larger, a larger size. And most people today are trying to bring in larger material because it looks better for their project immediately. Because you know, a landscape architect could, can draw a really nice rendering, but it's not drawing a nice rendering of a tree that may be 10, 15 years old rather than the day it's going to be built. So I want to make sure that we continually update the tree ordinances so that we are protecting the canopy that we have and preserving it. But also if things are taken down, that you are replanting, you are doing your part in that particular project to, to rebuild the environment if nothing else.
Well, I will say there, there, the only issue I've ever seen get more anger online than like a new apartment building was the trees that got cut down on Wrightsville. It was just, there were a lot of people that were, that were angry about that. And I know that that was actually not part of the original project or whatever it was. But, um, but I, I mean, I saw that immediately and said, okay, this is clearly an issue for a lot of people, which, you know, I, I get, like I said, I mean, when I see some of these renderings of these new apartment projects that are getting worked on, really multifamily projects that have maybe apartments with condos. The ones that really sort of, I just kind of jump out at me are those ones that do have that sort of aesthetic with the green space and the trees. And it just, like, I mean, it really does to me, does seem sort of like this sort of, not only aesthetic argument, like I, like I pointed out earlier, but also to your point, there's a, there's a value in having that green space and trees to absorb that.
There is. And, and I think with the new, with the new tree ordinance, although not, the land development code is, is definitely a living document. So we need to. development code is, is, uh, definitely a living document. So we need to continually work on it. But the tree ordinance, even as it is today, is so much improved from where it was 10 years ago, that, um, it, folks are really better understanding that, okay, we need to do better planning on our projects to preserve things rather than clear cut, uh, for lack of a better term.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, the, it is the planning side of it. If you take a little bit more time and plan things out, you can work within the environment, but it does take time and it does take effort. Certain cases, it may be less of a yield in an apartment development. Um, that's where I think things, the incentives of, um, you know, if, if, if you could save tree canopy and instead of building a three story building, you were able to build a four story building so that footprint is smaller, you can achieve the same things on both sides of the equation, because you can, you can preserve the tree canopy and also, uh, make the financials work for whatever that project is.
Yeah. And, and so kind of going forward, um, so yeah, I mentioned the WMPO earlier and they have their sort of 2050 plan, which was, you know, recently, I guess 2025. And I guess, I guess it's a 25 year plan, kind of looking forward.
Correct.
And so what, what do you see going forward? I mean, because it does seem like we have, you know, we, we had sort of that run up in the early 2000s, that, that giant growth from 90 to 2010 was just crazy. And everyone thought, well, that's never going to happen again. And then we had the pandemic. Then everyone went, well, that's never going to happen again. And so, I mean, it does seem like we are reaching kind of a, a point where we just couldn't absorb that, you know, increase in people. But this is a great place. I mean, everyone wants to be here. You can't fault people who come here and go, my gosh, I want to live here. It's like, yeah, I know. It's awesome. And so what, what do you see kind of going forward? What's the best way to handle it? I mean, I know you've talked about it kind of just making sure we plan properly.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it does, it all starts with that. I mean, it's got to start with the planning. So the MPO does a really nice job of planning for, um, uh, strategic roadway improvements in our, in our immediate, uh, in our region really, because they pick up part of, um, Pender County, all of New Hanover, and then a portion of Brunswick County. So we have to continue to look at that. We, we, we need, they, we need them looking at it from a, uh, that broader view. Um, and we have to continue doing that. Then we've got to support it. Um, the city has, um, roadway improvements that are, uh, from the 19, I mean, the 2014 transportation bond. We're trying to get those finished, uh, get those to a point that they're going to construction, which will make improvements in our area. The hardest thing about transportation improvements is going to be the inconvenience that it causes the public. And that's where the outcry comes in. You know, you, you don't, you don't want a, um, you don't want to endure the construction piece, even though it may have a benefit to you down the road, but, and it is inconvenient. I, I know that it is aggravating and it makes other parts of traffic back up. Market Street's a prime example. But now that Market Street is finished in that, in those sections, um, or, or almost finished anyways, it is moving traffic. You've now, we've now cut down on left turns on Market Street in the area where the medians are.
That is always a good thing.
I mean, yeah, it is. It is. It cuts accidents, it cuts accidents down. It keeps people moving. I know we'd also, we don't like the, the U-turn movements, but again, in a traffic modeling thing, those work much better than just taking left turns willy nilly wherever you want to. So again, Market Street took however many years it has taken to get to where we are today, but it is much improved from where we started. Um, military cutoff extension, wonderful piece of, wonderful project, but it should have been built 10 years ago. Um, you know, that's, it was needed then and it's, but today now it works great. Now we're pushing folks out to 140 faster. They have an easier way to get in and out of town. Um, and there's still more improvements to come with that because that will extend on into the, um, uh, what is the project they call into, into Pender County? Anyways, that, that bypass route goes into Pender County. Um, so that's, that's going to be another large piece of that puzzle of moving the traffic. 140, when it went around to 17, you know, it, yes, it took some traffic away from local, the local areas in terms of folks coming in to stop by and buy something. But it's a big volume of traffic that is not going through the cities. It's not going through the city of Wilmington anymore. It's not going through the town of Leland. You know, they're, they were going to bypass anyway. So now we're moving them around and folks were able to move around the city here faster.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I always tell people, so I live downtown, work here in Mayfair area. I can jump on MLK and like 20 minutes.
Did you, did you, well, you, did you live here when, uh, MLK was built?
Uh, it was, I would, didn't go downtown very often. I was mostly in the Mayfair area. And so, yeah, it was, so we used to have to take Market was usually the way, or you'd take, you know, um, Oleander, which, uh, yeah, now if you go that, those routes, it's like much longer.
Correct.
It actually takes me longer to get to somewhere midtown than it does to get from downtown to
That's right.
beach because of that, that, uh, uh, Parkway.
And, and one thing is we're all, um, we're creatures of habit, particularly with driving.
Yes.
So I was, uh, I was here when, um, MLK was built and, um, I used to drive the street and there would be virtually, it would be virtually a ghost town. It was an empty road. It was unused. Because if you said, why don't you take MLK? Well, that's much farther. And I'm like, well, you're going to spend, you're going to spend 10 minutes longer driving Market Street or, or Oleander, whatever. I said, rather than you drive the couple of minutes up the road and then, and then go on a road that's, you know, that's moving traffic. That's what it's there for. Um, and I, to me, it's been, it's been a huge improvement. And there are other things that I think I want to continue pushing. Most of them are unpopular, but I want to continue pushing and getting, um, the additional connections to all of those types, types of roadway systems so that people can move effectively across town without always being on College Road or being on Oleander or being on military cutoff. You know, it's a, we know where the, the, the worst intersections are. So, um, I do my best to avoid them. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, you, you know, you, most people are going to learn what, what are the back roads? And interconnection is the other part. That's a big part of the land development code and the neighborhoods and the, the properties need to interconnect so that you can get, you know, move along here and here in the forum, uh, or across the street in Mayfair, that it all connects all the way along. So you can always drive out to where a signal is. So you make turns at a signal rather than, you know, maybe having to go down a U-turn and all those things. So it's a, interconnection is a great thing. I know people don't like, uh, other folks driving through their neighborhood, but it's the same system as folks in Brunswick County driving through the city of Wilmington. There, it, it is still an interconnection.
Yes.
And that's, uh, the premise is the same regardless of the, the number of cars on it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, you're right. I mean, there's, there's been, you know, everyone always complains about every time a change happens, it's always bad, but MLK is, there's nothing bad about that. It's awesome what that's done.
There's not.
To flow traffic to get people downtown, which I think is really kind of, you know, really helped downtown as well, because it's so much easier to get down there. And so there's definitely a benefit to them for that.
Yeah. You know, I've heard folks talk about putting a circle around Wilmington. You, there, there is not a place to put a circle around Wilmington. I mean, if, if it were, it would have already been proposed. Um, you know, we are, we are bound by the ocean. And so were you going to put it on College Road? And we're going to make College Road and, and, uh, Carolina Beach Road, we're going to make that our circle. That, that would be a really nightmare.
No.
So, but we have that way on that northern side of town and we need to continue to use those avenues. Um, we need to continue pushing things that have north, south movements that take some of the east west traffic down.
Well, Richard, I appreciate you taking the time, joining me here on the podcast. Cause like I said, um, you know, when it comes to housing, it's, it's very important. We have people who are in elected office that, that, you know, understand what exactly needs to be done. And I think your background and expertise, uh, definitely highlight that. But do you have a website?
I do. Website is callyourforcitycouncil.com.
And when does, uh, early voting start?
Early voting's October 16th, Northeast Library. Um, and then it will, it will be there for a week and then it opens up downtown and at the senior center. So it will, uh, early voting will extend through the end of October and then November, November 4th is election day. Vote, vote, vote.
Yes, definitely vote. And, uh, Richard, thanks for being here again. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tyler. I appreciate you having me.